Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Regular Meeting. It's August 14, 2019. I called the meeting to order at 8:51 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please have a roll call. By the way, Rosemary Weber is filling in for our Borough Clerk today. I thank you for being here. I know you had a long day. And we'll try to make this quick for you. So that roll call, please.
Yes. Mayor Crancheck.
Here.
Councilperson Woo.
Here.
Song.
Here.
Sabari.
Here.
Park. Aversa.
Here.
O.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Here.
Rosemary Weber.
Thank you. We always start a meeting with a flag salute. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
People remain standing just for a moment of silence for a couple of people, a couple of groups of people. First, a moment of silence for the shooting victims in El Paso, Texas, shooting victims in Dayton, Ohio, and also for Police Officer Andre Moy of the California Highway Patrol who was shot and killed. Thank you. It just also seems like we have clearly a gun violence problem in the country and mental illness that goes hand in hand with it. So it's sad to always have to have these moments of silence. We do it in tribute to the dead, but I think, you know, going forward, more can be done to avert these things. So what I want to do as mayor is, completely separate from everything else that we're doing, is see if I could put together a little committee. I call it the Englewood Cliffs Committee on Gun Violence and Mental Illness. I'd like, you know, participation from residents, elected officials, police officers, and just try to maybe come back with something productive. I'm not sure what it would be, but perhaps we'll meet once a month and talk about what's going on and how it affects our community and how we could make sure, we could contribute somehow to fixing the problem. So if you're interested in working with me on this, just send me an email and I'll try to put together our group, okay? Madam Clerk, would you please read into the rector the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. As you walked in this evening, you'd see a collection basket there for the Office of Concern Food Pantry in Englewood. It's a community service project that we organize here. We encourage people to bring nonperishable food items that we contribute to the Office of Concern. The basket will remain out there until tomorrow, and I thank everyone who's brought anything in as a contribution. The Office of Concern monthly thanks us as well. There's a lot of working poor in Bergen County, not far from where we live, and we try to help as much as we can. I'd like to open to the public. Do you have a motion to do that?
Are we opening to the public on the budget? I thought we were gonna let our professionals go first.
Oh, is that why you want to do that first?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. You want to open to the public, so we'll deal with the specific municipal budget first, okay? Is there any discussion on that? I'm counsel, nothing, so we'll open to the public. Have a motion to do that? On favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So if you look at your agenda, it's a public hearing on the amendment of the 2019 municipal budget. It's Resolution 151, amending the 2019 budget, which was approved on July 29, 2019, but not yet adopted. I don't actually agree with the amendment, but I encourage the public to get up and speak to it. We're gonna open up three times today, so the first time is on this budget issue. So if you have any comments just on that issue, please come up now. Just raise your hand and I'll call you.
My comment is David DeGregorio, 165 Charlotte Place. I would just like to ask regarding the budget, and I've heard and I've seen in the past a lot of expenses being incurred through reactive reaction and not preventive actions or proaction. Geospatial digitization of the town. Do we have anything on computer that tells us where the houses are, where the drain pipes are, where the parking lots are? Do we have anything that is digitized in town geospatially?
I don't know if the planning board would have something like that.
I would highly recommend, I think the planning board should. I mean, that's natural that they should,
if they're forward-thinking, they should be digitizing the whole town and every house, every corner of the town, every fire hydrant should be on a digital map that could be available to all residents or available to the council. So when you make modifications in town, when you make improvements in town, or if you have flooding problems in town, they can be easily identified. Just the data that's already out there and available is absolutely incredible that you can get through census, that you can get through a lot of different means, and that investment would certainly bring this town into the 21st century, and I would highly recommend it. The other thing, as far as budget goes, I see that our taxes are being increased for next year. I'd like to know exactly why that is the reason why we are increasing the taxes.
I think we have a budget question here.
Well, we do. We can let... Well, I can speak, so I probably get the same reasoning as Steve would. Basically, we're increasing our legal fees to cover the increase in litigation that's going on in the town and to cover our future litigation on affordable housing.
So my answer's a little different. We would not be raising any taxes this year if this council did not return money to a retired police chief who had basically had it forfeited, about $600,000.
No, we hadn't forfeited. That was money earned, just like it was for Mauro.
No, no. This was a police chief who was on tape using racial slurs, sexual innuendo.
I urged people to listen to the tape.
And it was time that he become an officer. The prior council put that away from him. This council gave it back to him.
Mr. Mayor, I think we all know the underlying reasons why this all happened, at least those that pay attention to what's going on in this town. It's quite obvious, and it's very unfortunate for everybody because I'm sure it's shortened people's lives. And I think that we need to get past it, look to the future, and be proactive in ways that are innovative and that are gonna keep us out of the dog doo-doo in this town. And, you know, it's a shame that the taxes aren't going up. Nobody likes to pay extra money for taxes, but even more, when your taxes do go up, you like to see things that are happening in town. Quality of life, things, parks, additional parks, buying vacant land and making a park in the middle of town. We've got one in the north of town, one in the south of town. So proactive things, green acre things, green things that'll distinguish this town. I would pay $2,000 more a year if we had that. And I'm sure many people would be open to paying more money if this town were the real stellar, beautiful Englewood Cliffs it could be, with a recycle place that would be beyond belief, with proactive ways of saving energy, of being the cleanest town, the cleanest town, that oil litter nails on the road, curbs would be repaired. I mean, honestly, we're kinda mediocre, a little mediocre, and we're getting worse. Thank you.
Lynn Norton, 9 Willow Drive. And I know we're talking about an increase in legal fees, and Mayor, you're talking about a very small piece of the budget, but...
That's exactly the same amount that you're raising the budget.
What is the piece that we have here with Crancheck, Crancheck, McMorro, McMorro, Eastwood, McMorro, Eastwood, O'Shea, McMorro, McMorro, Crancheck, McMorro, Crancheck, McMorro, McMorro. Can you tell me approximately how much is in the budget?
You left out DeGregorio.
That's correct. I was gonna correct you.
Oh, sorry. We know that that's a medical issue, so that's slightly different. Can you tell me how much is in the budget for just those people?
Are you asking me or the person you rehearsed with?
Oh, you're so full of it. By the way, I haven't been around. I haven't talked to Debbie in weeks. So yeah, no, there is no rehearsal. You have this. You don't have a budget. I haven't seen a budget handed out. Normally, at the budget hearing, I would expect to see copies of the budget, but we're not seeing this. But you know what? You're deflecting, Mayor. Mayor, you're deflecting.
Normally, a mayor would not have to sue his council to get information, especially when the council was surrendering the town to a developer.
You know what, Mayor? When someone from town is socialist, that's nonsense. When you're going after somebody who's speaking here and offering their opinion, that's nonsense. Total. Those are your feelings, Mario. Those are your feelings. There's no fact involved.
This is so comical.
All right. Talk about the budget.
Lynn, I haven't seen you in a while. You've been on vacation.
No, you haven't.
We definitely have to get together.
For weeks, yes.
But that being said, there's not a specific number for those specific cases. I believe we added 200 to general legal.
General legal, 750.
General, well, it's now 750. We increased it. The amendment was, I believe, 200, and the affordable housing increase was another 300. Yeah. I'm rounding it off. So is it for those specific cases alone? No.
But that's the 600 that's getting chopped.
But I'm sure that there's a percentage, which, by the way, is paid out over years, and we're gonna have plenty more of your lawsuits because of your comments that you make from the pulpit.
I don't think so. This is not a pulpit.
Those things that you shouldn't be talking about.
This is not a pulpit.
That's things that are in litigation, things that you're antagonizing, things that already have been discussed. I feel, Mario, thanks to you, that number will escalate for many years.
Well, if your people are in charge, yes, they will. Look, I'm very happy that the residents of this town... I'm very happy that the residents of this town stood up on July 10 at a meeting with 300 people in the room, and only one person voted for affordable housing at 800 Normandy or any...
And that was his right.
800 Sylvan or any residential housing, and it was right, okay? The 300 people voted no. And no, no, it's fine. I respect your opinion. However, the rest of the town wants to fight this, and that's what we're going to do, okay? And I guess, Ms. Norton, if you were there, you would've been the second hand, but that's it.
Oh, I missed a meeting, by the way. Remember I had my hand up and you wouldn't call on me? Remember that, Mario?
Everyone had their hand up, got called.
Okay, can we stick to the budget? We have professionals here to answer your questions.
Lauren Eastwood, 4 Willow Drive. I'd like to know how much the borough is spending on the Gannett lawsuit, which conveniently wasn't on the list tonight.
Too much.
Including the litigation filed by Gannett to enforce the judgment because apparently the borough hasn't complied. I'd also like to know what is being done to get the borough in compliance with Oprah.
Well, I always ask the clerk to comply with all applicable laws, including Oprah. There was an order issued. I don't think our attorney answered what he should've done in time. Anyone say anything?
I'm not gonna get into the specifics of litigation itself. I don't have a number for you on how much it's cost the borough. In that case, the court has not issued an order on that latest issue that you just referred to. But I know you get my bills each month, so I'm sure you can figure it out how much you've spent on it.
I actually haven't gotten them the last few months, but I guess I'll have to start again.
Also, in terms of the Oprah, we do have a resolution on the agenda tonight to help add to the administrative office. So, thank you for your call.
Yeah. This is not the budget, right?
I see a bond need to be issued for about... Hey, Hamon, I'm sorry. Hamon Metta, 75 Roberts Road.
The bond ordinance is gonna be a separate hearing.
Oh, okay.
It'll come up right next after this.
Anybody else? On the budget? No, okay. Do you have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Can we now open to the public for the ordinance?
We're gonna have to pass the resolution.
Resolution adopted.
Yes. Oh, okay. Sorry.
It's listed on here, Resolution 167, adoption of the 2019 budget. It's a matter of words.
Do you want to make that motion to your head?
Sure. Motion to adopt Resolution Number...
167.
You have to go on 161.
167, though.
167, Amendment of Budget. Adoption. No, it's 161.
Resolution 151, that has to get adopted first.
No, 151 was approved.
You had a publication as required by law. You just had a public hearing as required by law. A resolution is one reading. It was adopted. The next step is the resolution to adopt the budget.
Right. 167. Motion to adopt Resolution 167. Can I get a second?
Councilperson Woo.
I'm gonna vote no. I agree with the mayor for the same reasons he stated. I don't think we needed the increase that's in the budget. There were ways we could've saved on that.
If you need to have a conversation, just go outside. Ms. Norton.
How would you suggest that?
Mr. Woo.
There were other ways. Last year, you know, we went through this with the investigations of the chief. We ended up paying, making the payout to him. I know you say that was earned. I don't agree with that, and that's my position.
But 600 is being paid over time. We hit our cap this year because of legal fees.
It didn't have to be 600, though. If that was, if there were savings on that front, it would've been less than that.
No.
You can't say the 600 was purely related to that. If we had saved money on that, then the 600 could've been 300.
It's not a vehicle of savings. No, it's not simple math.
It's not simple math.
So that's my vote.
Councilperson Song.
Yes.
Sabari.
Yes.
Park. Aversa.
Yes.
O.
Thank you. You know, also, the budget includes three attorneys dealing with affordable housing at this point, including Al Wunsch, who's got no background in it. Actually, four attorneys. So they're wasting your money, folks. This is political payback. That's why the budget's thrown the way it is.
Does Sam Treyns want to appoint?
Or does 2000...
Sam Treyns.
That's really funny, Councilman Aversa. You know, those are like good laughs. But the reality, though, is that Al Wunsch has known I would ever appoint for anything, including a DUI case, which is what he usually does. But now he's doing affordable housing at $30,000 a month. It's a little high.
Go ahead. Can we now open to the public, please?
So move on. Next thing up is Order of 2019 Public Hearing for 19-10. It's a refunding bond ordinance provided for the payment of amounts owing to others for taxes levied in and by the borough of Englewood Cliffs and the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $3 million, therefore authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds or notes of the borough of Englewood Cliffs for financing the cost of their borough. I'm not really happy with the way that's written because it says amounts owing to others. They don't actually list specifically who it is, which is an odd way of writing it. It's probably somebody trying to hide something here. I don't support this, by the way. But do you have a motion to open to the public? A more?
Second.
On favor? All favor?
Aye.
Mayor, do we have a list of what the $3 million is being paid to?
That was in the Resolution 19139 that was passed in June.
Most of it is T-LAN, right?
It's all.
It's all T-LAN. Okay.
That's all I wanted to know. That was passed in 1976?
It was.
Yes, it was.
I opposed it then. I oppose it now. Anybody else wishing to be heard publicly? Okay, there's no one's raised their hands. Do you have a motion to close the public portion on that?
Second.
On favor?
Thank you.
Point of interest, this was supposed to be heard, the application was supposed to be heard this morning for the local finance board. They postponed the meeting for today because the DCA offices threatened. The eighth floor got flooded last week, and unfortunately, that's where all their IT equipment is. So they had an issue. The meeting has been changed to next Thursday, the 22nd, where they will hear this application, presumably approve the refunding bond ordinance to be adopted, which has to be done before the council can adopt it, and it'll be listed at the next public meeting for adoption.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks.
Everybody know.
Take a vote, now.
No, just move on.
You need a motion.
For what?
For what?
To vote on the ordinance.
No, we're not voting for it.
No, we're not voting today. That's what Mr. Wilcox was just saying.
Okay. All right, so now what I'd like to do is open the meeting to the public before we lose everyone for any discussions on any subject matter that you wish. Do you have a motion?
A more?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So if there's any member from the public who wishes to be heard on any subject matter, please raise your hand off the microphone and state your name and address. Yes, sir.
Frank Wang from 34 Stephen. I heard so many narratives about this affordable housing thing, and I just want to get one question on the record. Anyone with expertise can answer. Does Normandy make more money by doing the complex which they want to do, improving affordable housing, condo, townhouse whatsoever, or do they make more money through renovating, leasing, the office building? Does anyone have done a study? Has anyone estimated?
Yeah, I don't think we can answer that, but your lawyer's right there. You're welcome to ask him if you want.
I mean, if we know the answer to that, then we don't have to do all this fight. We can just solve, try to solve the problem as we see it, than blaming one another.
You could probably guess which way they make more money.
Well, that's why I'm asking if anyone has answers. Why is it a secret? Is it so difficult to say?
Well, we're in litigation, so we can't speak freely on this. But we're in litigation because they want to build houses. We're not in litigation because they want to do a commercial development.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Michael Tellzer, homeowner, 9 Churchill Road. On 164, I think that was from your other meeting, and it's the appointment of Special Counsel Albert Wunsch in the case of McMorro versus Chiafi. Offhand, I really don't know what the... I'm not an attorney, but you have here my first attorney with the witness in my case and the defendant in my case, and the case is now pending in the third, at the Third Circuit, and I expect to be successful. So I just wanted to point that out. I don't know the rule of that.
Are you saying there's a conflict of interest?
Yes.
So am I. I've been saying that since January 3. We do agree on that. Okay. Not only that, but actually, Mr. Wunsch represented a defendant against the borough up until last June while he was actually representing the borough as well. So apparently, the rules that would apply to attorneys in New Jersey may not necessarily be applied to Mr. Wunsch.
I don't know how accurate that is, but...
It is accurate. Headel Gore was a defendant, and he actually admitted to me that he stepped down from it last month.
Once again, he continues to speak about things that are in litigation.
It's true. Mr. Tellzer knows also that he was a client of Mr.'s.
Because that's what he likes to do.
Are you currently a client of Mr. Wunsch's?
No, I'm not.
He was. So in our instance, Mr. Wunsch has created a conflict with a former client and a current client.
I just think you have here my first attorney and the witness, and the police chief is the defendant. I'm not, again, I'm not an attorney, but I think it's something that you should go over. And the conflicts of interest, do they build on one another? So in other words, if something here is not a conflict of interest per se, and this one is suing that one and this one is suing that one, I would check that angle out, too, because I don't think you need any extra lawsuits. I'm a taxpayer in town homeowner, so I just think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Lynn Norton, 9 Willow Drive. I was just going through the resolutions, and I see that Captain Murphy is officially retiring from the Englewood Cliffs Police Force, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for his many, many years of service. He's a homegrown guy, and he's done a great job for the town, and we'll be sorry to see him go, but wish him all the best. And anyway, just all the best to Captain Murphy.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, I see no one. Do we have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I wanted to also mention that last week, I always say that the best days of being mayor are reading Dr. Seuss into schools and cutting ribbons for new businesses. Last week was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Bank of Hope, the new bank on 9W and diagonally across from the Fire Department. So there's a little celebration there. So it's always nice to see new commerce come into town. And last Friday evening, I was, I attended as a guest with my wife Nancy the New Jersey Current American Chamber of Commerce Gala Dinner. It was a lovely affair and got to say a few words about how great Englewood Cliffs is and encourage everyone there who doesn't have a business in Englewood Cliffs already to move here and have a business here. So that was very nice and very well attended. Next up, our department head reports. Has everyone on council received those? Yes. Okay. Any questions or comments? And if you have something you don't need to talk about publicly, you could talk to the department heads as well, obviously, as council, if you call them. We have some minutes to approve, and those are... They're all 2019 minutes, so everyone on council now could vote for these. So I think we could just do a blanket resolution.
So I think we could just do a blanket resolution. These are caucus and regular minutes for June 12, 2019, July 10, 2019, and separately, special meeting minutes of July 29, 2019. Have a motion, please?
Some move?
Second.
Got a roll call?
Yes. Counsel person's will?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Payment of claims, this is resolution 19-159. Claims from July 11, 2019 through August 14, 2019. Those claims are amounted $2,916,534.41. That's 2,916,534.41. So we call them claims. These are actually expenses that came to the borough that were paid or that will be paid. Could I have a motion to approve that?
Some move?
Second.
Got a roll call, please?
Counsel person's will?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh? Yes.
Okay, next up, a series of resolutions. They're all resolutions from 2019. Number 160, approval of sewer rate. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Some move?
Have a second?
Second.
Got a roll call?
Counsel person-
I just want to ask if anyone has any information on what that rate used to be? The appropriate rate is, is that, what does that imply for the town cost-wise? Does anyone have any information on that?
The BCUA basically determines the rate for all users, per gallon rate. And it has to be approved by each town because it then gets passed on to the individual users in the town.
But this would be income, not expense, correct?
Well, it's not income to us. It's actually, it's the amount that gets paid to the BCUA through individuals doing bills for their sewer rate. But it's part of their regular bill that they get as their tax bill.
Okay, but are we passing that course on to our commercial tenant?
Well, every town handles that differently. I haven't been here long, I have to tell you how you do it.
Okay.
I'll let you know when I find out.
Neither do I, but I'll-
Did you want to say something?
Well, it does get passed on to most of us. It's strong, right? It's passed on to all of us, we all pay. Residential and commercial pay.
Okay.
Counsel person, Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh? Yes.
The next item up is the requested authorization to advertise for part-time position in the administration office. But this is something I definitely don't agree with. I don't, I don't see a need for this. I know it's, the administrator is also our clerk, not Rose. Rose is separate. Look, that office has been politicized. And if the person who occupies that office just came to work and did borough work and not Democratic Party work, we wouldn't need any more help in that office. Okay? I'm being very direct.
You're right.
And it's also, it also, also, no, no, well, this council also has-
The clerk was not Rice.
Well, we're not talking about that.
Yes, you are.
We're just talking about her performance as the clerk.
Look, I-
Mayor, you're always getting us in trouble. Please, I'm ready.
No, 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 no. Stop covering for your friends. Political payback is not acceptable.
There is no political payback.
That's what you do.
God, you're a politician.
Your heart wasted a week moving her office into what was our closed conference room.
Yeah.
Now, we don't have a conference room. She wanted a bigger office. This is the way bizarre payback happens. These two come-
No, the bizarre payback was you putting her in the back office, right?
Okay. Look, she wasn't in the office that was suited for the position.
Yeah, no, you moved her.
Now, when I meet with residents, we don't have a proper office or conference room to meet with them.
Okay, once again.
All right.
We're voting on a resolution to get a new office.
But look, this is a problem.
She is a friend.
All right, look, I don't think you need this position. You're just wasting money.
I think if you look at all the lawsuits that we have going on, we definitely do need this.
Look, the Borough Hall people are, hold on. Look, if you actually worked a full week instead of 32 hours or 30 hours, you wouldn't need this position, but-
Are you now talking about the amount of hours she works?
No, the entire Borough Hall. I mean, it's a 32.5 hour week or 30. I'm not sure exactly which way breaks down because no one could seem to explain that to me for four years. You don't need this position. If you're at home and you're watching this, they're wasting your money also. I know the back rows, you know, that's just part of the political machine, but that's different.
I made a motion.
Here we go. Some move?
So you made a motion to waste the borough's money, don't you? Okay.
You waste my time every time you're here. So can we move forward and then-
Well, you've been here for seven years and you've done nothing except try to surrender the town to the locals.
It doesn't look, doesn't look good to you, Mario.
Oh, really?
You've made a mess in four years.
Yeah, really? Let me actually tell you, we had our first tax cut in 42 years when I became mayor. We were even the next year. Went up slightly last year. This year, they're killing you with their taxes.
Look at the front page of this, of today's agenda. What's on there?
Look at that. Listen, I am going to fight for these residents of ours. If you don't want to give me information, I'm going to fight. That's why on July 10th, when 300 people showed up, you guys, you guys need to throw up bags because of what you had done for seven months. Okay? You signed an MOU, you're giving away the town.
Once again.
And then you tried to-
Once again, we cannot speak on this issue here.
You should say test it about that.
What you do, you just continue to spout your non-
Why don't you do this?
And then we can't debate what's going on. We're in litigation.
If anything else happens, you always know from me what's going on, all right?
Yeah, of course.
There's never an issue.
You're going to sell this town. I'm telling you, you guys are trying to destroy this town.
No, look, there was a filing in court today. I encourage everyone to go to E-course and read the Normandy certification. I have copies here if you want after the meeting.
It's public.
You can see the whole scam that they were trying to run.
There was no scam.
The guy that controlled-
There was never a scam.
Bank loans for the mortgages.
What?
Gloria and Jimmy are going to do all the closing.
Are you really?
Perry Parker's got the real estate. And Adifah's got the insurance. What a perfect neighborhood.
Oh, my Lord. Did you really? I seconded it, all right.
All right, counsel person, Wu?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Gloria?
Gloria?
Mayor, I resent the remarks, okay?
I can't hear you, Gloria.
She resents the remarks, the accusations that you made.
Gloria, it's political payback. Look at what you people do.
There is no political payback.
It's not whining, it's just telling you everything that's happening here.
How do you vote, Gloria?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's Ida and Debbie. Appointment of a special counsel, Albert Lunch, in a matter-
162.
Acceptance in the 2018 order.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Counsel person's Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Oh?
Gloria?
Love Gloria.
Gloria? Hello?
I'm here.
Okay, we're voting on 162.
Yes.
Thank you.
163, acceptance in the 2018 action plan.
Some move?
Second.
Counsel person's Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
164, appointment of special counsel Albert Lunch in McMorro versus Chiavi.
Some move?
Second.
Again, I believe that Albert Lunch is so conflicted, he should not be representing the borough in anything. Don't even worry to come on that, but not right now.
Counsel person, Wu?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
165, in connection with the affordable housing litigation with Normandy, I, planning board chairman, Torino, and former council president, McMorro, have been served with deposition notices and subpoenas. So we need to appoint counsel to defend our depositions in connection with that litigation. So the resolution is appointment of special counsel Christopher Martin Esquire for the representation of Transact Reno and McMorro and Ahana Sylvan Avenue LLC versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, BERL 6119-16.
Counsel person, Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Gloria?
Gloria, hang in there. We're almost done, Gloria. 166, retirement of Captain Brian Murphy. Doesn't really tell you much in that heading, but there is a resolution.
Some move?
Second.
Counsel person's Wu?
Abstain.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes, I'd like to thank him for his service.
Aversa?
Yes, I would really like to thank him for his service and his singing.
Oh?
Yes.
So just want to clarify one point from the reorganization meeting minutes. The planning board constitution as provided by the planning board secretary is correct, but our council reorg minutes are incorrect. And I just want to reconfirm from those records, just so there's no issue, that the planning board right now, the members are, one, Carolina Calderon, and that's a two-year, she's filling a two-year on expired term. Two, Ramon Faro, he's filling a three-year on expired term. Mary O'Shea is a member, she's on a four-year appointment. Carol McMorro is a member, she's on a four-year appointment. Alternate number one is incorrect, it's written, it's actually Francis Perea. She's a two-year appointment. Alternate number two is Thomas Kim, he's a two-year appointment. Alternate member number three is open, and that's a two-year appointment. The borough representative is JP Lee. My designation, my designee is class one Lauren Eastwood, that's a one-year appointment. Borough class two. Excuse me, Mr. Moens, Ms. Simons, Ms. Norton, you gotta just keep it down. If you can't have a conversation outside, you can do the- Yeah, I hear you. Really?
You also haven't stopped talking. We're trying to conduct business.
Can you tell me what the changes for Borough Class 2, JP?
There's no changes.
There's a change.
It's just that the reorg minutes were wrong.
Well, how are they wrong?
Well, I'll give you this document. I'll give it to Rose.
Well, why are you reading it?
Well, because I wanted to be official record because apparently, we're not able to take proper minutes there.
Well, we're not going to make it official till we all review.
Well, it is official. It's the way it is.
Well, there's no change.
This is from January 3rd.